Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the March 3rd, 2021 meeting of the Gatesburg Planning Commission. I hope everyone is well tonight. You're all looking in looking good from here anyway, in small little boxes that you are. First up tonight is the approval of our minutes from two meetings, February 3rd and February 17th. And I assume it's okay if we go ahead and make a single motion for both.
Chairman, I move that we accept the minutes of February 3rd, 2021, and February 17th, 2021 is written to the record.
Is there an unmuted second?
Second.
Thank you. It's moved and seconded. Commissioner Wessel.
I.
Commissioner Hopkins.
I'll be an I. I just wanted to note that I wasn't at the February 3rd meeting, but I did watch it on television because I'm an old man and that's what we do.
Very good. Thank you. Commissioner Kaufman.
I.
All right. Thank you. And I vote I as well. That passes unanimously. Thanks very much. Next up is our consent agenda. We have two items on the consent agenda tonight. One is for AFP-8795-2021 exterior renovation for the Mazda dealership at 625 North Frederick Avenue. The second item is AFP-8791-2021. In addition of 226 square foot rooftop mechanical penthouse and revision to rooftop screen walls at 45 West Watkins Mill Road. Are there any questions for staff on the consent agenda? No, I think.
Very straightforward.
All right. Yeah, I think so. All right. Is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
It should move and seconded. Commissioner Wessel.
I.
Commissioner Hopkins.
I.
Commissioner Kaufman.
I.
And I as well. Thank you very much. That passes unanimously. That takes us now to a resolution for an application we heard at our last meeting. This is a resolution, the Planning Commission granting approval amendment to schematic development plan ASDP-8733-2020 at 333 Ellington Boulevard. Jasmine, I think you're presenting staff to set this up. Sorry.
Yes, I am.
All right. Thank you.
Good evening. Ask before you for the final action of application ASDP-8733-2020 at 333 Ellington Boulevard. The applicant filed an application to amend schematic development plan SDP-11001 to include an additional story within the overall maximum building height allowance of 75 feet for a new multifamily building. The property was approved for a five-story multifamily building with a maximum height of 75 feet. The proposed story will be partially below grade at the corner of Ellington Boulevard and Diamond Back Drive. So that below level will contain uses associated with the multifamily building such as a leasing office, a mill room, and a fitness room. Then the city code, this basement will be counted as a story if it uses the business, use it for business or dwelling purposes. And in the situation, partially below grade level will be considered a story and count towards the maximum five stories permitted on the approved schematic development plan. So a public hearing for this application was held on February 17th. At the conclusion of the hearing, the planning commission announced by motion the closing of the record on February 25th, with final action on March 3rd. There was no testimony from the public during the hearing. We got that at the time, the planning commission record closing. There were additional, three additional written comments that have been received into the record, which is exhibits 13, 14, and 15. In response to those comments received, the applicant has submitted a response letter, which is exhibit 17 in the record. In conclusion, staff is supportive of amendment to schematic development plan ASDP-8733-2020. The plan is in conformance with the approved sketch plan D-315. The plan is also in conformance with the building footprint and maximum 70 feet in height, which was approved as part of schematic development plan SDP-11001. The plan is just a continuation of development in Crown and therefore will not adversely impact the character of Crown and the adjacent properties. Staff would like to note that a final cyclone application has been submitted and is currently under review. The application will be presented to the planning commission at a later date when it's ready. Not be happy to answer any questions you may have, and we also have the project team here.
All right. Very good. Thank you, Jasmine. Commissioner, any concerns with the resolution?
None for me. Very straightforward and looking forward to getting this moving.
All right. It sounds good. All right. Well, if there are no other questions or concerns, looking across the grid here and seeing anything, hands swaying, arms swaying. No? Okay. Is there a motion, please?
So staff recommends that the.
I'm sorry. Yeah.
So staff recommends that the planning commission, based on the evidence and testimony submitted to the record and the findings and the final staff analysis, approve amendment to schematic development plan ASDP-8733-2020 and adopt the resolution.
Yes, since our record was closed, I hadn't hadn't thought to go through that step, but thank you. Sorry for cutting you head on the on the process. Now with that, are there any concerns with the recommendation from staff? All right. So seeing no, no, no comments from the commissioners. Is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move that the planning commission, based on the evidence and testimony submitted to the record and the findings and the final staff analysis, approve amendment to schematic development plan ASDP-8733-2020 and adopt the resolution as presented.
Second.
All right. It's moved and seconded. Commissioner Wessel.
I.
Commissioner Hopkins.
I.
Commissioner Kaufman.
I.
And I as well. Thank you very much, all. That passes unanimously. Thanks, Jasmine, for for taking care of that. Looking forward to seeing that come through. All right. We have now the site plan agenda and there is, there's one application on that tonight. Gray FP-8739-2021. Implement the changes from ASDP, so an SDP amendment, 8610-2020, including adding exterior generator and closing loading dock at 700 Quince Orchard Road in the MXD mixed-use development zone. And again, this is an amendment to final site plan. And presenting from staff is Sam Copeland. Sam, are you on? Let's see. Ah, there he is. Okay. Good. Good evening, Sam.
There you go. Good evening, everyone. IT staff, please display pocket page 245. Perfect. There we go. So this is for application AFP-8739-2021, requesting improvements to the existing property at 700 Quince Orchard Road. Subject property is located in the MXD mixed-use development zone and received planning commission approval with S-304 in the 1972 for the construction of the existing office building. More recently, the planning commission approved SP-8100-2018 in the year 2019 for two new streets related to the existing building. ASDP-8610-2020 was approved by the planning commission in October 2020 for the addition of integrated light manufacturing, the list of approved uses, increasing the building's habitable space, and establishing off-site parking for the property. The applicant submits this application to implement the changes approved in ASDP-8610-2020. The application also includes two emergency generators to be located in the parking lot within a proposed enclosure, the enclosure of the loading dock, and facade improvements related to the proposed changes. The application is to facilitate a new biotech company associated with Operation Warp Speed, which is of critical public interest. The application covers the 700 Quince Orchard property and a new application for the remaining property was recently submitted. Here tonight to present the application and answer any questions you may have is Nancy Rayklin, Esquire with Schulman Rogers.
Thank you, Sam. Good evening.
Good evening. This is Nancy Regler for the record, and if IT could bring up the applicant's presentation on page 246. So I'm land use counsel at the law firm of Schulman Rogers, and I'm also counsel to the applicant Nova Vax Inc. Next slide, please. The last time we were before the commission for the schematic development plan, the tenant for 700 Quince Orchard had not been announced. We are proud to announce, as you can see from the sign on this image, that Nova Vax has secured the lease for the entire building and is appearing before you tonight to obtain the final site plan approval so that it can pull permits and occupy the building as its global headquarters in late summer. A lot has happened since we have last appeared before you. As you recall, Rock Creek Park Properties, who developed 700 Quince Orchard and also owned the parking lot and the stormwater pond next door, has since sold 700 Quince Orchard Building to Alexandria Real Estate Equities. Nova Vax, through its affiliate, 14 First Field Holdings, has purchased the parking lot and the stormwater vacant land next door for its future campus. Yesterday, 14 First Field Holdings filed a new sketch plan for an integrated campus for the vacant land in the parking lot along First Field Road, along with 700 Quince Orchard and 105 Bank Street to update the previously approved sketch plan for the same area that was approved back in 2016. So we will be before you again in April to begin the public hearing process on that exciting project. So let's focus on 700 Quince Orchard, and in front of you is a rendering of the main entrance to the 700 Quince Orchard Building, which faces towards First Field Road. 700 Quince Orchard will house the executive offices of Nova Vax. They'll take about 50% of the space with the remainder of the space for their research and development lab laboratories and integrated light manufacturing space. This final site plan reflects the modifications that are needed to make the building accommodate Nova Vax's needs. Next slide, please. Most of the modifications occur on the Quince Orchard frontage of the building, which we will detail in a moment. This rendering shows the completed facade changes on the Quince Orchard facade. Next slide, please. In plan, we are showing the 700 Quince Orchard Building, which is in the lower left-hand corner on the says, it's noted as Lot 12 Block C, with its surface parking lots, which are on three sides of the building, and the new segments of the internal streets, which have already been constructed. Street B, which is the access from Quince Orchard Road, and Street A, which goes along the front of 700 Quince Orchard. Since this modification converts the garage parking at 700 Quince Orchard into habitable space, this plan also shows the existing parking lot that exists between the building and First Field Road. This existing parking lot was previously approved as the off-site parking for 700 Quince Orchard in the recently approved schematic development plan. As I just said, Nova Vax, through its affiliate, now owns the parking lot, and 14 First Field Holdings has a recorded parking easement with ARE, the owner of 700 Quince Orchard, which provides for the use of the parking within the limits of the parking easement, which is outlined here, and also for the future relocation of this off-site parking area into a structured parking garage to be built on the first 14 First Field property as part of the development of the Nova Vax campus. The purpose of this final site plan is, as staff said, one, we're confirming the total building square footage, which is just under 180,000 square feet. We're showing the reconversion of the first floor garage into habitable space. Third, we're retrofitting the former garage entrance and creating an employee entrance on the Quince Orchard facade. Fourth, we're expanding the enclosed space of the building into the covered loading dock area. Fifth, we're adding emergency generators to service the critical operations in the building. And six, we're fitting out the building for that mix of office, research and development labs, and manufacturing manufacturing space. And finally, we're we're confirming the number of onsite and off-site parking spaces that will serve the building. So next slide, please. The final site plan is consistent with the schematic development plan. The building size and the uses are as approved as schematic development plan. The parking ratio for this mix of uses of office, R and D, and manufacturing was approved at one space per 470 square feet. At the time of schematic development plan approval, we didn't yet know how many spaces would remain on site at 700 Quince Orchard. And so the planning commission approved up to 225 spaces could be located off-site on 14 First Field. And at that time, we told you that we expected when we came back for final site plan that the onsite and off-site space numbers would be more balanced, and in fact, they are. 383 spaces are shown as proposed on this slide for 180,000 square foot building. The final square footage of the building is actually 179,417 square feet, so we guessed pretty close. That size building doesn't require 383 spaces, but as staff has noted in his staff report, it only requires 382. And one of the staff's proposed conditions is for us to correct this discrepancy in the parking chart on the final site plan when it's certified, and the applicant will do so. Next slide, please. So this slide, which I prepared based on 383 spaces, shows the onsite and off-site parking breakdown. And you can see that the onsite and off-site parking spaces are more evenly balanced. There is going to be some restriping that's going to be done. So in fact, instead of 184 spaces onsite at 700 Quince Orchard, we're expecting now 189, and we're expecting 199 across the street at 14 First Field. So 189 plus 199 actually exceeds the minimum that's required. It's greater than the 382 that's required. And these striping changes will, of course, be shown on the certified site plan. Next slide, please. So I bring this sketch back. This is the exhibit to the recorded parking easement, and you can see that the off-site spaces will be located immediately across from the main entrance to the building within that red outlined area on the off-site parking lot. In addition to the parking easement spaces, you will notice that there are a lot of surplus spaces on the existing parking lot outside of the parking easement. These surplus spaces are not needed for any existing use. And in fact, this allows Nova Vax to have some flexibility, do some work in the area around the property edges for its future development without disrupting the off-site spaces that are needed to serve 700 Quince Orchard. And so this off-site parking lot serving 700 Quince Orchard can stay in place until it is actually relocated to a planned parking garage that will be built on 14 First Field. Next slide, please. So as we indicated, most of the modifications under this final site plan occur on the Quince Orchard side of the building. And as you can see from the rendering to the far right is the loading dock, which now is modified, appears as two stories. And if you move two bays to the left, you can see the infill of windows at the former parking garage entrance. And if you move four more bays to the left at the center of the building on the first floor, is the new employee entrance. So if we would go to the next slide, please. So now that we've oriented you on the rendering, and you can see that most of the changes are in the north corner on the Quince Orchard facade, I've shown a detailed plan of that corner and to identify the major modifications. So number one marked in the middle is the area where the former garage is to be filled in with a window storefront type improvement. And number two to the left is the new employee entrance, which has been expanded with green space and a sidewalk from the parking lot. And the parking lot has been restriped to accommodate both this change, the change to the parking garage entrance, and we've also added all the ADA spaces, which had formerly been within the garage. So as schematic development plan, we had anticipated that the infilled garage entrance would accommodate both the infill and the employee entrance. However, the grade of the site required the employee entrance to move towards the center. This actually works very well since now the employee entrance on the Quince Orchard side lines up with the main lobby entrance on the opposite side of the building. So employees entering the building will now be able to move right into the main lobby and all of its core facilities, including the elevator bank. On the far right is the roofed area. The loading dock was reclaimed and enclosed, and we'll show you in a minute detail of that area. By enclosing that part of the loading dock, we've added 1,952 square feet to the existing building. And in the parking lot facing Quince Orchard Road, two emergency generators and a screening wall have been located. If you've driven around the Quince Orchard First Field Road area and looked at other buildings, you know that almost every building has an emergency generator to serve the critical operations in that building. So we will give you the details of the generator enclosure for 700 Quince Orchard in a moment. Next slide, please. So I'm bringing you back to the Quince Orchard facade so that you can see that all along the lower level, the garage has been enclosed and the clerestory windows in the garage have been installed in the former garage openings. The employee entrance is in the center. The garage entrance is now all windows, and the loading dock on the far right now appears to be two stories. So let's go to the next slide, please. These are two photos of the existing loading dock area. On the top photo on the left, you can see that the loading dock has a dedicated drive into a roofed loading dock area. The loading dock itself, the driveway, is actually separated from the remainder of the 700 Quince Orchard parking by a curb and a green buffer. So enclosure of the roofed area of the loading dock will not actually impact the loading drive. The lower photo you can shows you the existing condition inside that loading dock area, and you can see that there is a double door to the right for people, and to the left, there's a roll-up door that goes straight into the existing building. And this will help you orient yourself to the loading dock expansion plan, which I'm going to show you next. So if you'll go to the next slide, please. So this slide is a detail of the modifications to the loading dock area. The red colored area is the existing building, and it's showing how it is being modified to create a loading dock office and a washroom for delivery truck drivers. The gray area was that outdoor area that you saw that is being expanded and enclosed. We're creating a quarantine vestibule to control and hold items moving in and out of the building in a controlled space. And the loading dock is being extended with a new door at the end. So all of the gray area that you see on this plan is new enclosed habitable space, and that's that 1,952 square feet. Now above this enclosed area that's shown on this plan is the roof of the loading dock, which now has a parapet wall to screen rooftop equipment. So from the street, the loading dock area looks like two stories, but only the first floor is enclosed. The second story is a finished parapet roll around some rooftop equipment. So next slide, please. So let's move to the final major modification, which is the emergency generators located in the parking lot facing Quince Orchard Road. And you can see that in the bottom right-hand corner of the parking lot. From the plan, you can see that two generators are screened by an enclosure that has been designed to fit on a section of the former parking lot spaces and to avoid a parking green island on the left-hand side of the enclosure and a stormwater facility on the right. So it fits snug right between those two. The emergency generator location was chosen very carefully. It's the ideal location given site and building constraints. This location is cited to be proximate to the electrical risers in the building, distance the generators from nearby property lines, keep the circulation system through the parking lot clear, and preserve truck turning movements throughout the site. There are two emergency generators to keep the power needs of critical operations in the building continuing in the event of a system power outage from Pepco. The screen wall is designed with the same facade finish as the main building. It is brick painted white with some facade details. The screen wall is designed to screen the foundations, the generator with their sound attenuation box, and their topside exhaust piping. The two generators are sighted as to each other per the manufacturer's requirement for air between the generators and access for service. The screen wall itself is 15 feet, 11 inches high, and approximately 94 inches, 94 feet long. The end panels have air tanks, and the access door into the enclosure is facing the building and not Quince Orchard Road. The sighting places the generators in front of the lower level of the loading dock and most of the infilled garage entrance. The generator screen wall is not higher than the first floor level of the building and is below all second floors windows. So if we could go the next slide, please. This rendering shows the emergency generator enclosure on the left in the parking lot facing Quince Orchard and its relationship to the north end of the building, and you're looking directly onto the loading dock. Next slide, please. This is a detail from the generator manufacturer of an emergency generator with a sound attenuation enclosure. And in the middle, you can see the generators in the center with a muffler and exhaust pipe at the top. It is enclosed in a sound attenuation cover with internal baffles. So sound moves in a wave pattern, and the baffles break up the linear travel of the waves, knocking back down the noise level and the energy of the sound waves. So this sound attenuation cover and the generator comes from the manufacturer sitting on the two rails on the bottom, and the whole of the equipment is installed and leveled on a concrete foundation. What you see in front of you, which is the generator, the sound attenuation box and the and the rails, is 13.3 feet tall. So when you add in the foundation, that is why the generator screen wall is sized as it is at above 15 feet. Next slide, please. So this slide shows the details of the two generators within the screen wall and the detail of the length and end panels of the screen wall. The screen wall, as I said before, is painted brick to match the building facade. Now, we are also showing you a rectangular area that's noted on the top-left corner of the screen wall facing Quince Orchard Road. And you can see that on that top, this is number one, you can see the little rectangle square in there. This area outlines the area of a wall sign that is permitted by city code, and Nova Vax may choose to install a sign here. The thought is to give the screen wall another purpose and look more intentional to the cars that are passing by by placing a sign on it. So next slide, please. So this is what Quince Orchard frontage will look like to cars passing by on Quince Orchard Road. So if you look at the three street trees on the far right-hand side of the rendering behind that, you can see the emergency generator screen wall. You can see the top of the loading dock above, and you can see most of the Quince Orchard facade of the building is still clearly visible from Quince Orchard Road. Next slide, please. Now, 700 Quince Orchard Road building has four active facades, which are all detailed. And to end, I'd like to take a quick turn around the building and then open up for questions. So we start here. Again, this is the west elevation facing First Field Road and is the main entrance to the building. Next slide, please. This is the south elevation, which faces some of the office buildings that are further down Quince Orchard Road. And Quince Orchard Road in this plan is to the right, and the new segment of the internal Street A is on the left. You can see that in this rendering. The south elevation has an existing employee entrance with a wrap. So many of the onsite ADA spaces are located in the onsite parking lot facing right on the south side of this building. So all of the ADA. So all of the ADA spaces that had to be relocated out of the garage have been placed in this area of the onsite parking lot. Next slide, please. So this is the opposite end of the building, the loading dock with the generator facing the One Bank Street office building. And we've seen this before. So let's go to the next slide, please. And so we end with the new Quince Orchard facade of the building, which we have focused on in this presentation. So next slide, please. So on behalf of NovaVax, we respectfully request approval of the final site plan. The proposed conditions of the staff are acceptable to applicant and the applicant team is here and available for any questions that the commission may have. Thank you.
Thank you. That was really well done presentation. Thank you for for being so thorough and covering in such detail. Sam, this might be a question for you real quick, just as a technicality. Because a lot of this hinges on the adjacent property sort of essentially shouldering the parking requirements. However, we're really not considering the improvements to that portion of the site, correct? Because it's technically outside the bounds of this application. It's really just a
Sure. So Yeah, so I can speak to that. So the applicant has demonstrated that they recorded a parking easement at 14 First Field Drive. Staff has thoroughly reviewed and made sure that there is enough minimum parking requirements on or in the easement to make sure that 700 Quince Orchard has enough minimum parking.
I guess what I was getting at is can we comment on or can can we at least address some at a higher level, maybe not too level, too much detail? But whatever improvements are happening, it's an aging paved area and I don't know. You know, one of the things we have to look out for is at least some fundamental safety and some fundamental functionality if we're going to vest the parking requirement in this this adjacent property. But I know technically it's not in the site plan. It's really more of a just a demonstrer diagram of an easement. But I think where my questions would go is just a little bit more, maybe maybe from counsel, if you want to take this or anybody on the team. What is the extent of either restriping, reconfiguration, cleaning up holes, landscaping, pedestrian paths, all those sorts of things that would kind of go into what you would expect from a new parking field?
So I'll
Nancy, you want to answer that one?
Yeah, I'll talk a little bit if if that's okay, Sam. So at the time of the original site plan that 700 Quince Orchard got when Rock Creek had just renovated, as well as we showed it again during the schematic development plan, that offsite parking area, there are improvements that have to be made to restripe it so that the circulation system is safe and correct to the interim parking area that was approved, as well as the striping in the parking lot will be brought up to city code to make the whole parking lot be newly restripped according to city code. So there are improvements that the applicant will be making to that surface parking lot.
Okay, how about lighting, crosswalks, things like that?
So on that parking lot, the lighting will be made functional because it, of course, is NovaVax's own employees who are going to be there. And there is a sidewalk on that side of segment of Street A and there is a connection from this parking lot to the new sidewalk. There are crosswalks over to 700 Quince Orchard that are already in place on segment on Public Street A. And there is bicycle, motorcycle, ADA striping, all of that is being placed also over there. So the onsite parking facility at 700 Quince and the 14 First Field offsite both have the required ADA parking and the required motorcycle and bike parking, et cetera. So we've treated them separately.
Okay. And as you said, the the parking areas that are not within the easement or the dedicated easement, there's no intention to use those for anything else at this point, but theoretically then adjacent an adjacent building or just use could could enter into agreement with with the owner of this site and use those several spaces for their own, their own use if they entered into a similar agreement. Is that correct?
I mean, I think that may be possible. That is not the intent of the applicant at this time. And in fact, as I said before, they they cited the parking easement in such a way so that if they went to develop around the edges of 14 First Field to do utility work or anything that they would have space to do it and not disrupt the 700 Quince Orchard offsite parking.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Commissioners, any any other questions, please?
I've got some related to the generator enclosure. Looking at the plan, I mean, without getting into it, a ton of discussion, I think the generator enclosure for me is the one part of this that raises flags and it's simply because of the massiveness of it. Looking at the plan of it, there seems to be a ton of spare spare space inside this enclosure. And I see there's a fuel tank there. Is there any other equipment that's being accommodated here? Are we you know, are there transfer switches? Are there other things here that don't show up on plan that sort of justify all of the white space around the units?
So Justin, do you want to jump in and talk about this at all? Because I believe it is only the generators are sighted so that there's air and access around each of the generators plus the fuel tank. So it, you know, that the sizing of it as far as area was dictated by the manufacturer.
Yeah, Nancy, this Dave Johnson, this the constraint that we had to work with really was between the two parking islands. One was an existing stormwater structure and the other we wanted to maintain. So with these two particular gen sets that are typical with the sound attenuation intake and outtake, they have to be offset to allow air circulation. We do show the the fuel tank. And there may be some other ancillary gear that's placed out there, but really it's just the arrangement of the generators that that can't be end to end or side by side. The only other option, you know, we had other options to potentially look at that, but it would have required additional structure.
Yeah, that was going to be my my next question, whether, you know, what was driving you to other than other than speed? What was driving you to the pre-enclosed sort of drop in unit as opposed to a, you know, an architectural generator enclosure with two freestanding gen sets inside of them? Because, you know, you're you're paying a premium in footprint efficiency to use these drop in units.
Right. Well, we would have, we would have had to put a, we would have had to made it an actual building with a roof and and all the other access to it. It's that's a somewhat atypical arrangement for these prepackaged generators. And so that, you know, it didn't seem like the most expeditious option for us, given the constraints that we had.
And and that's fair enough. My my last generator question is, have you looked at, you know, right now it appears as if this whole generator pad basically is more or less sitting on grade. You know, with where your intake louvers are, is there any opportunity to sort of depress this bathtub down into the ground two or three feet? You know, you've got room inside the door to have a series of steps, step downs and sort of decrease the perceived height of this by a couple feet.
You know, Mike, I don't know if you want to comment to that. Architecturally, when we looked at the elevations, I will say that given the length of the enclosure, the height of, you know, 13 to 15 feet made it seem actually it just made it look, I thought, a little bit more balanced in aspect ratio. You know, depressing it down by a few feet, I think is probably going to be a little bit more of a challenging aspect ratio with making it seem like it is intended to be there. Yeah, so it's a trade off, I think.
Yeah, and I'm not, this is Mike Goodman, I'm not familiar with you know, the the water resistant nature of the generators, but that would definitely make it where they wouldn't be able to naturally drain, which is a component of what we have now where they are on grade and we don't have to worry about any kind of water pooling or puddling at its feet.
Typically, in a situation like that, if they were depressed, we'd have to put some pumps or some other mechanical device. It does become a quite a maintenance headache because, you know, leaves and debris are constantly in there fouling up and every time it rains, you have to go out there and you know, you can't then just make it automatic all the time.
Yeah, I mean, okay, we can we can discuss more when we get into the discussion part of our of our evening.
Sure. Anything? Any other questions? Lloyd, sure.
Yeah, just a question about the the new enclosure around the loading dock. You said it would be two stories high. That appears to be a blank wall of two stories. Is there any session or any consideration of perhaps making it look a little bit more interesting than just a two story blank wall that's going to enclose an area that was once open?
Talking on the north elevation?
Yes, where the loading dock is currently.
Yeah, I was going to say that it appears two stories high, but as you can see, the the loading dock is actually fairly high. So the parapet wall, you know, just covers the rooftop equipment. That whole north side of the existing building is already painted brick. So you know, it it matches the existing.
But there's no there's no consideration to putting anything of interest. For instance, you said that you would at some point perhaps put some signage on one side. Anything considered for that blank wall?
Lloyd, I may be missing something, but on if if the elevation is correct on 266, it looks like there are louvers in that screen wall.
That's what I was looking at. That's that's what I'm looking at right now. Is that correct? Those are going to stay, correct?
So let's see. So page 266, maybe we can bring that up. So we're all looking at the same thing. Or did you want the
So that that section on the right of this image is the the loading dock enclosure, correct?
Yeah, that's the Quince Orchard facade. And what we were just looking in the photos was the common property, the north side facing Bank Street.
Right. This is the view you're concerned about, right, Lloyd?
No, no, that view is fine. My concern was on the Bank Street side and on the First Field side. I wasn't quite sure how that was going to look from First Field.
Oh, on the First Field side, you mean where the opening is on the enclosure?
Yes.
I would bring up package page 364. I think that will show what you're referencing.
I'm not sure it's 364.
No, it's
No, let me see.
I apologize. 351, package page 351. That's, I apologize.
Presentation, right, Greg?
Yeah, I didn't. I didn't show this elevation in my presentation.
Yeah. Okay, so the the north elevation in this picture is just a blank wall, two stories high in front of a three story building, basically. Whereas on the south elevation, you've got something that that is of interest.
And if you look at the overall site plan on 249, the the context is a little bit deceiving because this elevation, the the north elevation in this rendering is probably not going to be seen by anybody on Quince Orchard or First Field. It will be seen by people in the building immediately next door on Bank Street, but you know, it's it's sort of tucked back, pushed back, set back and relatively constrained and shielded by what's happening next door. If that makes any difference, Lloyd.
Well, I was just wondering if there's going to be anything of any interest there. And again, if it's blocked out by by the Bank Street building, then I'm not sure exactly what the distance is between Bank Street and that wall.
Not Bank Street, that that's another block down. But you know, the the office building that's between Bank Street and this building.
Yeah.
It's a it's a bank building. It's fairly close to Quince Orchard Road. It's pushed way out towards the street.
Correct. And you come out of the shopping center and you see that bank building.
Yeah. And that bank building, for all intents and purposes, would shield the view of this north end of NovaVax from anybody approaching from the north on Quince Orchard heading south until you got right on top of it, then you'd probably just get a very much a glancing view of the of the end. And and but like I said, if you're if you're in the parking lot for that little office building or you're in the office building itself, we're going to be looking at seeing this. So you know, that that would be a legitimate concern. But in terms of just general view of the building for the larger public, I don't think it's going to play much of a role.
And there and the remainder of that, other than the extra story on the loading dock, is the current existing building. So it is a blank wall facing the property line, the north property line that joins the one in five Bank Street property, which is the M and T Bank and the three three story office building next door.
Okay, I'll I'll accept that.
Okay. What other questions before we go to the public and then move on to discussion? Anything, Matt, for the applicants team? No? We can read your lips. You're on mute, but I'll read your lips.
No, no questions, I think.
Okay. Move into discussion. All right. So if there are any other questions from the commissioners, what I'll do now is go to the attendee list here, and I think we have somebody out there. So Chris, why don't you go ahead and play the the video for testimony?
Good evening. If you've connected to the meeting tonight via Zoom and you're on a desktop or a laptop and you wish to make a public comment, we can't currently see or hear you. What you need to do, please, is wiggle your mouse around and look towards the bottom center of your screen. You should see a raise hand button. Go ahead and click on that now for us, please. Alternatively, if you've connected in via telephone, you can press star nine.
Okay, thanks. And I'm looking at the attendee list and nobody has their hand up at this point. So Chris, if you're not seeing any kind of notice from anywhere else, I will go ahead and move on to staff recommendation and then we can move into discussion if something turns up on the attendee list. We'll certainly, we'll certainly cut back to that. But Sam, if you would go ahead with the recommendation, please.
Sure. So staff recommends that the planning commission, based on the exhibits submitted, the applicant's testimony and the staff report findings and recommendation grant AFP-8739-2021 Amendment to Final Plan Approval, finding it in compliance with sections 24-170 and 24-172A of the city zoning ordinance with three conditions.
Okay. And the three conditions, frankly, I think to not to not to downplay them because they are important, but they're more of a a procedural or technical thing, not nothing that really involves the design of the building itself. So commissioners, let's let's break this down a little bit for our discussion. Let's start with the field, the parking field to the west, the the proposal to to shoulder the parking for the new the new building configuration based on this easement. Any issues with that at all or with how they're proposing to to designate the parking?
None whatsoever for me. And I and I just to your point earlier, Mr. Chair, I I think they did a pretty good job of restriping that parking lot and doing the crosswalks where they should be. So I think I think there are some at least some light aesthetic improvements to that lot already on the civil plans. So we will get a slightly more dressed up, if not, you know, fully renovated, but at least dressed up.
And I think we had to acknowledge too, is this is for all intents and purposes, an interim parking solution. There will ultimately be more development on the site with structured parking and more site improvements. So it's not as if this is a 30 year parking lot commitment. All right, very good. Any other concerns about the parking field? No? All right. Phil, anything I see down in the corner? I couldn't tell whether you waved or anything. No, okay.
Good with the parking.
Okay, let's move to the the conversion of the lower level to to habitable space. Any issues with that, that that basic proposal?
I'm happy with it now.
Okay. You like it better this way than as a parking garage?
I like the fact that there's a building right next to it that blocks it.
Okay.
Oh, the end for the loading dock, yeah. But which is, which I agree with you, Lloyd, I think I think it's acceptable. It's kind of a, it's kind of a lean mean, you know, modernist building too, if it were, you know, well articulated. We might might want something different at a loading dock, but at some point a loading dock's a loading dock, right? And and to your point, John, I think the lower level being recaptured as usable space is a fantastic thing. So in the city, in redevelopment of existing buildings, you know, we're always excited when we can uncover usable square footage without having to build new, without having to tear something down, without having to reconfigure the world to get a, you know, a good use like this into one of our buildings. So I think it's, I think it's brilliant and obviously from a planning standpoint.
Yeah, yeah, good. All right, then with that, let's move to the one that probably will garner the most conversation. The the generator pad and enclosure. I I think to set this up, there's clearly some some logic to having it here and doing it on this spot as opposed to somewhere else and kind of to the earlier point, there was really little to do, little, little other space available on the site, given that the actual site is doesn't include that whole parking field to the to the west. So but I do, I do want to kind of follow up with Phil's questions about what might be done to the enclosure to minimize the impact from from Consortia Road. So Phil, why don't you take it from there and kind of flesh out your comments a bit?
Yeah, I mean, I I'm I'm looking at this and my you know, I'm trying to be be sensitive in ways. I'm sure the applicant has, you know, the need to get this in and get this facility up and running and the importance of it locally, nationally. I think we all understand that. My my concern is that we're building a fifteen foot tall, hundred foot brick wall facing the for all intents and purposes, the the primary elevation of the building for for most people, which is the what they're going to see along Quinn's Orchard. And, you know, on one hand, the way we it's sort of been worked in with the parking works really well. On the other hand, it it eliminates any possibility to screen this with landscaping or anything else because we're constrained by the islands. And I'm trying to balance, as I look at this, the fact that that I've done a handful of these generator enclosures and, you know, under I understand the trade offs that the team is making here with these prepackaged units, but we're getting a bigger enclosure because of it.
Yeah, would you, on the, on the, either the presentation or whatever drawing makes the most sense, go to the Quintor elevation that shows shows this? Because I think in context, it's big, no question, but so is the building behind it. And that's important. Well, actually, if you have the
362.
With with the whole building in the in the composition.
The renderings, I think, don't show the the wall, but the drawings on 362 do.
There we go.
That's it.
So it looks very imposing in in detail, too, but it look very staminous in in one. It gets John's point.
Yeah, well, the where we were before, the renderings do show it. I mean, it's a big white wall. So it's I I don't know, I'm I'm I am torn here. And I do think the lower you can depress this thing, you know, the shorter you can make it, the less imposing it'll be.
See this, Phil, would you think there's any advantage to considering breaking up the material at all? If it were I mean, there's, there's a couple of other tonal things happening on the main building. Is would that be worth thinking about here? Nothing significant in terms of footprint, because it is the footprint is what it has to be to to fulfill the requirements of the gear. But if if a large expanse of blank white wall so close to the street is a concern, is there anything to be gained by trying to do? You know, a lower few courses that match the lower few courses on the main building or or, you know, corners or something, just something that would break up that expanse. Do you think there's any
I think that would, that would certainly help. I mean, if there's no other way, if there's no other way to actually reduce the footprint of this, which, you know, I take, I take the applicant's word on that, given the equipment that's been selected. You know, to the extent we can do something architecturally, you know, signage, of course, will help. Obviously, you know, I I'd almost rather see some some large graphic sign on this thing than a little applied sign, like understanding that's the next package. But if there was a hundred foot tall or a fifteen foot tall, hundred foot long sort of graphic that that would get painted on this white wall, I would take that any day of the week over, you know, five by ten sign in the upper right corner.
Well, so, I mean, I I usually try not to offer solutions, right? But but it is painted brick, so mimicking that the H, you know, that's in the base building sort of graphic. You can do that on both Lloyd's north facing wall and, you know, Phil's east facing retaining or, you know, screen wall. So you could actually just get a little bit of color in there. It's painted brick, right? So if you just get a slight off white or, you know, a gray that that mimics the windows to some extent, you could just get two boxes in there, one that goes to the ground and another that sits within a white frame above it, and you could probably get a graphic on there that just it just, it's just a hint that breaks down the large linear box of the the screen wall. So and it's just paint, right? So so there might be some other solutions there that the applicant could could investigate with staff. Frankly, I I I think it's okay at the scale that it is, but it could be improved.
And I guess I kind of throw at the applicants for just a quick kind of response to that. If you all have hey, consider it and left that aside or would consider it or maybe already have some ideas like that in your back pocket?
And actually, if I could interject real quickly, if you could bring up packet page 355.
Sure.
So the reason why I'm bringing up this page is because when you look at the generator enclosure, looking at figure three, you will see that there are two lines of relief work into the brick. Staff did have similar concerns about a blank facade wall facing Quinn's Orchard. But we were able to talk to the applicants and they did submit a revised plan showing relief work with two stripes. So it's not necessarily a blank facade all along Quinn's Orchard, but there will be some relief work into the wall.
Fair enough.
Yeah, that's great. And we always underestimate the value of even a even a very modest shadow, which would would will definitely break down the mass. But I I there may be an opportunity there for a little bit of paint as well. So maybe if you move these these inset brick, you know, to a proportion, it sort of mimics the facade just a bit. Like I said, the H or something, and then just put in some infill panels with paint, right? There may be a solution, or it may may look awful, too, but it might might be something worth. And then, John, just before we get off the the wall, just a quick add to sort of get on the record is saying, you know, the wall's not showing a cap. I'm sure it's going to have a cap of some sort. You know, whether that's precast or, you know, metal coping or or, you know, stone or whatever that you guys are going to do, I'm sure, I'm sure it's going to have a cap. And so I would just put it in the record that, you know, we're approving this with a cap.
That's fair.
So and again, I think, you know, and your existing building has a nice little linear cap line at the top of it, sort of as a modernist piece. You might be able to actually just take that, the graphic from the main building, shrink it down and stick it on this wall with some paint and a cap. Coping, but
Any other comments on the generator enclosure? Maybe to paraphrase it, I don't, I don't think what what we're discussing is is at all on the level of derailing or or changing what you're proposing. I think it's some finesse on the that that piece that you have to understand, we're also very much thinking about the context of this whole street and the whole streetscape and everything that happens along Quinn's Orchard Road and you know, I'll be the first to admit there are things that happen along that and other streets that, you know, we sure wish we had more control of. But there are no precedent for 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 doing things the same way again and again. So to the extent you can sort of take take into consideration a little bit more finesse on the enclosure, and I think you could work with staff to figure that out with how far you could take it or or not. You know, what's appropriate. If you and the commissioners agree, I don't see any reason to putting putting additional approvals on this or or extending the review much longer, so.
So for the applicant, we would be happy to work with staff to enhance that wall facing Quinn's Orchard. Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. And Sam, would you have enough direction from this discussion to know to know what to do with that?
Yes, I believe so. What I will do is I will work with Greg to make sure that we are coming up with a solution to adequately fix this problem.
See, very often we talk like this, Sam, and then, you know, you guys are then saddled with having to figure it out and you realize next the next morning, I have no idea what they talked right in. All right, very good. Thank you. Any other concerns with the application commissioners?
No, just a thank you for putting such effort into the application. It makes approval a lot easier. I know we got way down the weeds on this wall, but it's actually a very thorough presentation and makes it makes it easier to get excited about about the project and about the use and all that other stuff. You know, we're not, none of us are excited about, you know, trying to approve Superman's landing zone and criticizing the color of his shoes, right? We really, we want this used city and and we're excited to see it, but but there there might be a couple of little things here for you guys to tweak, that's all.
This is an example, the part where the next morning you're going to wake up and say, what did he, what was he talking about?
I just wanted to say I'm thrilled and proud that Nova Vax is expanding in the city and it's to the benefit of the city and all citizens and it's just, it's a, it's a great project and looking forward to seeing seeing it finished off.
Indeed. And and the building, I mean, it's progressed so nicely, it really, it's really come up as a as a nice high quality full blown renovation of that old building. It's it's pretty remarkable.
Like the blue lights.
Yeah, yes. All right. Well, if there are any other concerns or questions, and I'll just sort of look around the grid here real quick. I don't see anybody. Okay, I think we're ready for a for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, the planning commission, based on the exhibits submitted, the applicant's testimony and the staff report findings and recommendation, grant AFP 8739-2021 amendment to final plan approval, finding it in compliance with sections 24-170 and 24-172A of the city zoning ordinance with the three conditions is read into the record.
Second.
All right, it's moved in the second. Commissioner Hopkins.
Aye.
Commissioner Kaufman.
Aye.
And Commissioner Wessel.
Aye.
And I will vote aye as well. That passes unanimously. Again, thank you very much, the whole, the whole team that brought this in tonight. Looking forward to seeing this, this wrap up and seeing a really exciting business move to the city. This is, this is outstanding. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we are, we're done with our regulatory agenda, and then it takes us to from the commission. Matt, anything tonight? You're on mute.
Yep, no, nothing for me. Thank you.
Okay. Lloyd, anything tonight?
Nothing further. Thank you.
Okay, Phil.
Nothing for me.
Really? And I I have nothing. So we'll get, we'll get this wrapped up pretty quick. Greg, what are we looking at for the next next couple of months?
Yeah, so we have a busy agenda coming up for the planning commission. We have a work session next week, Monday, March 8th. That's on the Lake Forest Mall Master Plan Amendment. We have a joint work session, sorry, a joint public hearing on this sketch plan that, you know, for the 14 first field that you just heard about tonight, that's scheduled currently right now for Monday, April 5th. There's a public hearing on a rezoning application that will be for Monday, April 19th. And there's a joint public hearing on an SDP in the Lakelands for a daycare facility Monday, May 3rd. And then our next planning mission meeting is Wednesday, March 17th.
As far as you know, we've got, the polls have gone out or the everyone's been polled for attendance, right? So we're
Um, yeah, I'm looking at it now. It looks like we have heard back from all of you on attendance.
Great. All right. Thank you. Mr. Schulting, how are things going at your end of City Hall?
Things are great. I did want to point out that in addition to the four public hearings that Greg just mentioned, there is an additional public hearing on May 3rd, which is on the crematorium text amendment, which got introduced on Monday after a little hiccup the previous meeting, but it now is on the on the books and ready for public hearing. And as Greg pointed out, the sketch plan for Nova Vax is the biggest and most significant of the joint public hearings coming up. And, you know, like everything Nova Vax, it's going to be Operation Warp Speed. So it's on a abbreviated schedule, which I think everybody's on board for. The records are shorter than we typically do, but that's in order to get this project moving as quickly as possible.
Sounds good.
I think that's it for tonight.
Thank you very much. Frank, thanks for joining us. Anything to, anything to add?
I do not. I do not, but we did, I will say that staff had worked quite a bit on the Nova Vax presentation earlier on, so it's certainly nice to see it coming through for more final approval. So as as I think Lloyd was saying, certainly good for, good for the city and good for the community.
Yes, indeed. All right. Well, thank you all. If there's nothing else, have a good evening and we're adjourned.
Good night, everybody.
Stay healthy.